Welcome to the November 15th, 2016 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Meeting. We will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. If you will all, please rise and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you, we just paused to thank you for all of our blessings. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day that we've had. Though we, we ask your, your guidance and your wisdom as we meet tonight on matters before the district. And in all that we do, Lord, we ask that, that you just be with us, be with, be with all of our staff and our, and our kids. And Lord, we ask for peace in this country, for understanding, for kindness. We could all use to hear a kind word every day. And Lord, in, in everything that we do as a board, let us be fair, let us be wise, let us be just, and in all that we say and do, let it be pleasing to you. Amen.
Amen.
So, thank you again for being with us. We have several things to, to discuss tonight. First up will be our agenda review. I believe we have no additions or corrections to the agenda, so if I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lotta Calvert-Hayes. Then I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Thank you. I thought we had lost you already. Before we, before we go on to our special recognitions, we just, I just want to take a moment, and I know we were gonna have a special place tonight to talk about those who helped us with the bond, but I just want to take a moment to thank the voters of Forsyth County for passing our school bond. There took a lot of, of workers to do that, and we'll talk about that later, but right now, just to the citizens, the residents who voted for it, thank you, thank you, thank you. It was amazing that it passed, and in all precincts, and with the numbers that it passed, and I really think that that shows us that everyone believes that there's some, something in there for all of our students and for all of our schools. And so, thank you for putting your trust in us and to our staff for that, and I think that's how we took, took those numbers. Also, I just want to take a moment to congratulate our board member, Mark Johnson, on his win for state office as state superintendent. So, we, we will, we will miss you, Mark, but we are proud of you and look forward to what your next journey has in store for you. So, we're proud of you. Now, moving on to some special recognitions this evening, at this time, I'd like to call on Brad Oliver for the North Carolina Music Teacher of the Year.
Madam Chairman, and Dr. Emery, members of the board, it's my pleasure tonight to recognize one of our own, Ms. Carol Earnhardt, which is no stranger to many of us. Carol has been with the school system for several years. She's been our Teacher of the Year for our school system back in 2007, 2008, I believe. Carol has, she teaches workshops for us, any kind, she's one of my go-to people. I've had her, we even did a conference in Greensboro, and they didn't ask the Greensboro Schools to do the performances, and we, I had, we went over and did it. Carol was one of my groups, brought the house down. They even asked her, that same after-school conference, asked her to go to Jacksonville next year. That's a true story, right? And so, you can't make those kind of things up. But just a wonderful teacher, if you ever watch her work, just, you know, the kids are so involved. But this past week, the North Carolina Music Educator Association awarded Carol the North Carolina Choral Section Teacher of the Year, which is from, voted from all the chorus teachers from the entire state. And they honored her and surprised her, she did not know that was, she was getting that. And we thank Dr. Emery for coming and supporting us there. And so, and it's a family affair with Earnhardt. Her, her husband, Mike, is here, he works in operations. Daughter Ashley is one of our elementary music teachers, and her son-in-law is the East Forsyth Choral Director. So, it's very much a family affair in education. And so, and she's also conducts the heart of the triad chorus, as you may know out in Carinsville. So, just a wonderful teacher, speaks well of what we do in education, and couldn't be a bespoke, a wonderful person to dishonor. So, another photo, do y'all bring Carol up? I know that you guys will probably see her, and, and Carol, will come on up? Yeah, we're gonna give you all the award. This is the big award.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
You too.
So, on behalf of the board, we just want to say how proud we are of you. I will say Carol and I have known each other.
A long time.
We went to high schoo-, we went to high school together. So, go Eagles. Though she's at Glenn now, no, I won't say that. But, but just thank you for the passion you have for what you do and for the difference that you make in the lives of our students. We know that because they come back and share those stories, and, and I, I do think you, you and your family, it's not, it's not just about what you do in your classroom at Glenn, but it's what you do in the community, and it just goes on and on, and you're constantly giving back. And I think what a great recognition by your peers, because they also see that. So, you're amazing, keep doing what you're doing, and we're so glad that you're part of our team. Thank you, thank you. And I know they want to cheer for you. So, at this time, I'll recognize Stan Elrod to talk about our state 1A cross-country champions.
Chairman Jones, Dr. Emery, members of the board, I know that fall season is still in effect, and we have nine football teams that are getting ready to start playoffs on Friday night, and we wish them the best, but this evening, we're gonna talk about cross-country. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association 1A Cross-Country State Champions, the Walkertown Wolf Pack. I remember last year about this same time, we were talking about Walkertown's first state championship in the history of their school, and it was the cross-country team. They must have enjoyed that evening, because they're back to celebrate their second cross-country state championship, back-to-back. Walk- Walkertown won several Redler Season Championships this year, let me, let me just give you a couple. They won the Jungle Run Championship, they won the Seahawk Invitational Championship, they won the Northwest 1A Championship, they won the Midwest 1A Regional Championship, and then they won the state championship. In the state meet, Walkertown placed four runners in the top 22 runners, and they placed all five of the competitors in the top 50. This is truly a team state championship, and I don't think there's a single senior on this team, so...
Wow.
Three-peat? Guys, no pressure, but three-peat, three-peat? Their overall record this year was mind-boggling, I want you to listen to this. You gotta consider, when you have a, a cross-country meet, there's multiple teams there, so it's not like a duel, as you know. But their overall record this year was 123 wins and 16 losses, and their record against 1A teams, which is their classification, they were 72 and 0. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce Coach Bobby Smith, and by the way, this is his first year as the coach there in cross-country. He will introduce his team, he will introduce his administration, and he will also introduce the all-important parents. Coach Smith.
No pressure being a first-year coach. I'd like to first thank Dr. Jay Jones, our principal at Walkertown, our athletic director, Tim Hagman. Without their support, none of this could have came possible. They are, Dr. Jones is at every meet he can come to, he's always, we're always texting, trying to find out, you know, what we can do to make our guys better. He's so, does so much behind the scenes. Our parents for accepting me as your new coach, as the new guy on the block, and, and my athletes that, bar none, are as good athletes as I've ever had. These guys, 5:00 AM in the morning when most of you are in the bed or getting ready to go to work, they're out running five, six, seven miles every day, from June through last week. So, I'll introduce our, our guys, we're missing one tonight, but I'll introduce our guys. James Warren is a junior. James was selected to the Northwest 1A All-Conference Team. He was also the Northwest 1A Runner of the Year, winning the conference championship. He was a... He was selected to the 1A Midwest All-Regional Team, and he was our member of the 1A All-State Team, James Warren. Another junior, Logan Carter. Logan Carter, he's a, he's a Northwest 1A All-Conference Runner. He's also selected to the 1A Midwest All-Regional Team, Logan Carter. And we're missing Junior Blake Freeman tonight, he had a very important birthday today, so he's celebrating it with family and friends tonight. Blake was also a member of the All-Conference, Northwest 1A All-Conference Team. And we have our first freshman, Jacob Gallant. Just to give you a little insight on Jacob, Jacob is one of the top 10 freshman runners in the state of North Carolina. He's a member of the Northwest 1A All-Conference Team and the 1A Midwest All-Regional Team. We have another freshman, Corbin Lanowicz. And Corbin was selected by the North Carolina High State, High School Athletic Association 1A as the Sportsmanship Award winner for 1A Cross-Country. We have freshman Jabez Huntley. And we had, we have sophomore Elijah Loy. And I do want to thank the board, I'm sorry, I do want to thank the board for inviting us here tonight. And there you have our 1A State Champions, and the parents, we guess, all the parents for their support.
So, on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to thank you, Coach, for what you do.
Thank you.
Players, runners, amazing job, two years in a row, no pressure for their, for the...
Three-peat.
Three-peat, but, but that would be great. And so, thank you for your dedication, you know, those are one of those, we think of cross-country as an individual sport, but hearing what each of you bring to this team, we see that, yes, you're competing as individuals, but, but you're also competing as a team and representing Walkertown Wolf Pack very well. And thank you, Principal Jones, for what you do, and parents, again, thank you for all your support of your students, but of your school and of our district. And so, I know it, it takes everyone to make this happen, and we're, we're very proud of, of your students. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Coach and, and team, I know the board would like to shake your hand and say congratulations, if you just want to turn around right here? Thanks. I believe Kevin has two recognitions for our technology department.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, and board members, and Dr. Emery. As you may remember, our district was awarded a substantial E-Rate funding a year ago that gave us an opportunity to upgrade all of our switch, data switches in our, in our schools, our networks in our schools. And this involved going into all of our wiring closets, changing out all of our switch gear, and all the connections that make all the connectivity run in our schools. It also involved going through all of our classrooms that didn't have wireless access points, which is mainly in the K4 range, and finishing all that out, so that, all told, all of our network closets were upgraded, and all of our class, all of our instructional classrooms have a wireless access point in as part of this project. And with the E-Rate guidelines, we were given one year to complete that, so, and that's a pretty big task, we think about the size of our district and the, and the fact that we have over 1,400 of these data switches that had to be replaced. So, that, that was a big challenge. And I'm happy to report that we completed it a little bit ahead of schedule, and I wanted to take just a minute to recognize some folks tonight that are really behind the scenes, some of our technical staff. The fact that we finished this project and the magnitude of it without outsourcing any of the labor, and we continue to do our normal jobs throughout the day, is really a testament to their dedication to the, to our students and to our staff. And all of them couldn't be here tonight, but I want to thank you for letting us come and, and recognize some of them tonight, so I'd like to bring them up, and they are really the backbone that made this project happen. So, if you would, I'd like to recognize Calvin Rayner. Calvin, come up here. Jeff Taylor. Janelle Waddell. Vladimir Demov. Brian Cooper. Evgenia Demov. And Zach LaGranne. Get on across that stage, Calvin, you're doing good. You're doing good. These are a great representation of our technical staff that many of you don't see them on a day-to-day basis, but if your computer doesn't work, or your internet goes down, then they're the ones to call. So, I wanted to just publicly thank them for making the E-Rate Switch Upgrade Project a success, and I wanted to give them a hand tonight. A little additional insight on that, it required a lot of weekend work, a lot of after-hour work, a lot of working in schools this summer that had their condition turned off on a Saturday, so there was a lot of, a lot that was done there, so, thank you, guys. Turn around here, yeah. In addition to that project, another large project that we just finished, just, just a few days ago, we, we recently rolled out 5,500 laptops to all of our certified staff in our schools, so most, all of our teachers and our certified staff in our schools, and that also is a big undertaking. Got a couple pictures to show you. Get me on that jacket. You got the controller? So, just a couple little pictures. If you think the magnitude of five, over 5,000 laptops, we had those staged up over at the Outlaw Warehouse, they came in, and our staff went through those, there was just, there was a couple hundred sitting there. We had to configure those, get those ready for delivery, and we did all this during the day in shifts, as, as our technical staff were continuing to work their normal jobs as well. Got those, got those rolled out. So, I've had a lot of good feedback from our teachers about what that means to have a new laptop for them to use, and I hope that'll be a great, great fit to, to enhance instruction, what they're doing in the classroom. But I want to take just a minute, again, all of our technicians could not be here tonight, but to recognize some of those that went above and beyond the call of duty to get these laptops rolled out as well. Again, Calvin Rayner. Jeff Taylor. Janelle Waddell. Jeanie Ulrich. Vladimir Demov. Zach LaGranne. It's your night, Calvin. So, again, just special thanks from me. If you think about our core values, one of which is high expectations, I think any of the, of any of the staff members on our technology staff will know that I have a very high expectation of what we do, I hold them accountable for that, and these guys always step up for anything that's needed, and this laptop project was no exception to that. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Roll through the line, everybody. And one, one last word, you know, our folks, we have great leadership in our department, our technology department, we have a, a leadership team of five folks, and our technical services are head-up by Chris Corbin and Carla Miller. Chris Corbin couldn't be with us tonight, he's got basketball practice with his daughter, but Carla is here, and Carla and Chris, they are really, as far as high expectations, I'm, I'm, they call me the Chihuahua sometimes, them always nipping at their heels about things that need to be done. But they, they, they step up every day, and the two projects I mentioned, and just the daily support of all we do, could not happen without Chris and Carla. I want to bring Carla up, and she's gonna kill me for recognizing her. This is, uh, this is, this is one hard-working lady in our district right here. Thank you, Carla.
Next, I'll recognize Dr. Emery with recognition for the Winston-Salem Chamber of Commerce and the bond promotion and support.
So, thank you all. I particularly want to also thank our tech team, because on the heels of all this work comes the great excitement of what comes in a bond package, and there is, is more to come, and we're very excited about that, so we, we appreciate all that you do for us. As our board chair said earlier, I too would like to add my thank you to our community and to all of you, I look around, folks that we worked at the polls with, a great effort over the last, really, 18 months. I also want to say thank you to our board, this would not have happened without you and your leadership, and sometimes leadership, people see this, and they don't see all that goes on behind the scenes. And I know that you all created billboards and distributed materials and worked the polls, and were volunteers, just like everyone else who helped make this happen, so I appreciate that effort. We have had a longstanding partnership with the chamber, who has helped lead campaigns for us, and they have all been successful. And so, I think that's a pretty great record to have, and we just wanted to do a special recognition and thank you of those folks who were instrumental in that effort. I see CEO Gail Anderson standing in the back. I'm just gonna ask if folks are here, if you would stand, Haley, Wendy, Jill, Rhodessa, Jennifer, and I know you all extended to any other volunteers who... Oh, thank you, Mike.
Mayor.
Mayor. We really appreciate, any, any other volunteer, I mean, probably everyone in here in some way was a volunteer, but we just want to personally say to, to our chamber partners how much we appreciate all the hard work. I also want to say you may have created a new campaign strategy with lounge chairs and T-shirts. They looked really nice at the polls, and a different kind of presence, but we thank you all so very much for your hard work and your leadership on this campaign. If we could ask you to come, come on up.
Yes. Hello?
Stranger?
I know.
I have a text to you in a few minutes.
It's amazing.
Thank you, Jill.
So, on behalf of the board, we, we just cannot say enough how much we appreciate all that you have done. Every time that we were out at early voting or at the polls, you, you guys were already there, had everything set up, recruited so many volunteers. Mayor, come on up here. It, it was, it was phenomenal, the team that you put together, and we really could not have done it without you. Thank you so much for coming in on Saturdays and putting signs together, and all those, putting out signs, and I'm sure now picking up signs, and all those crazy, so the mayor didn't send you a letter and say, "Why do you have these signs?" Just kidding. Um, but it's, it's just a lot of work, it's a lot of behind-the-scenes things, and, and you made all those things happen seamlessly, and so we just thank you for doing that. So, I know the board wants to shake hands, and I'm gonna leave this here so you can pick this up, but again, just, just thank you so much for passing the bond, but, but what that really means and what that means for our students. Not, not just in a short period of time, but for the long term, for Forsyth County and public education, so thank you. Absolutely. Sure. Just go right ahead, Elizabeth.
I just wanted to mention that the people who came up who helped a lot with the bonds, and it was extraordinary what they did, these are also incredible advocates for public education in our public schools all the time, and I could not be more grateful to what they do for our kids, for our community, and for the fact that they, although they don't sit on a school board, they never stop fighting for all of our children and for a good public education for every child. So, I thank you not only for your bond work, but for your deep commitment that has gone on for years.
That's true, that's true. Thank you, Elizabeth. Dr. Emery?
I think it's fitting that we left this recognition to the last one, on the heels of bond issue. As has been stated here tonight, the real purpose in working hard and having the facilities and the technology tools that our kids deserve is for the outcome that every student graduates and is successful and can go on to career or college. And tonight, we honor a high school in our district that is celebrating their fourth consecutive 100% graduation rate. And so, I'd like to ask Principal Fran Cook if she would come forward, please. I do want to say a few words about Early College and Fran's leadership. Fran helped give birth to Early College, she has been there since we started it, she has been a... fervent leader and advocate, she is amazing public relations for this program, but what always amazes me, and to me is the most important thing I could say about this woman, is I have not gone to one graduation yet that I do not hear a story, or two, or three, about in order to get 100%, we split up, the staff split up and went and picked up this child every day because they got moved from their home and they didn't have a way to get to school, or we had to go talk to this professor to make sure, and we stayed after school, so I think sometimes people get the impression when we say college, that all these students are on Easy Street, and that is not the case, there, these are, many of these students are first generation college students, who along with 100% graduation rate, graduate with an associate's degree, and it happens because adults build relationships and are relentless about them graduating, and so if you ever see Fran anywhere, think of the word relentless, right, we're so proud of you Fran, we're proud of your kids, and this is an incredible honor for our district, and we are appreciative of all the work that goes into that, so thank you very much.
The only thing is, I'd be remorse if I didn't mention my staff, because my staff works just as hard as I do, building these relationships and caring for these kids. So Fran, on behalf of the board, we just wanted to tell you again how, how proud we are of you and your staff, and I think that shows what a great leader you are, to know that it, it takes a team to do that, and sometimes we are called up in the number of 100%, but we know that that's, that goes back to the kids, and it's believing in each kid, and what we hear is that you believe in going that extra mile for every child that you have in your building, and so thank you for being that adult that believes in them, and, and having the atmosphere and the environment that your staff can do that, and go those, to hear those stories about picking folks up and doing those extra things, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I know everyone's going to want to shake your hand and say congratulations, thanks. So that concludes our special recognition portion for this evening, and that moves us into our public comments on agenda items, for public comments, we have three minutes for each speaker, I believe tonight we have one person signed up, and that is Rhonda Mays. Welcome Rhonda.
Good evening Chairwoman Jones, the board, Dr. Emery, I am Rhonda Mays, school social worker in this district, serving as the president of Forsyth County Association of Educators. This evening I would like to speak on the bond, over the past several months, I've attended various meetings concerning the bond, I listened to presentations, as well as a number of comments made by parents, students, and others in the community, the one thing that continued to echo as I was speaking with people in the community about the bond, is that they were, they're hopeful that when you start looking for contractors, that you look for contractors who are local, as well as give minority contractors an opportunity, and the reason for that is to keep the money also local, that we don't get this big bond and then the money just leaves our area, so if we have contractors who are local, then that will guarantee almost that that money will stay in our community as well, so it's a win-win for our community as well as for our schools, we are pleased that the bond passed, it is very exciting to know that students and educators will receive the necessary technology and the resources in a number of our schools that need it, we are pleased that we will have an increased number of pre-K classrooms and seats for the students who are going to greatly benefit from it, this is also a great opportunity for students to start off school ready, to be ready when they enter our doors, a number of our schools and our stadiums that have been in need of repair and replacement, that would happen as well, a welcoming school environment starts before a person enters the building, it begins when you stand outside and look at and around the building, it sets the tone of what could be awaiting you inside, thank you for taking the time to listen to the concerns and the needs of your students, families, educators, and community members, thank you this evening as well.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comments on agenda items, and we will move into discussion items, at this time I would like to recognize Daryl Walker, and Daryl will, we've been talking quite a bit about the bond, and so Daryl's going to come and give us a bond update, and kind of tell us what's next. As Daryl's coming forward, I think we've done several recognitions of those behind the scenes and hard work, and we just can't thank Daryl and his staff enough for, for all that they have done, background work for the past 18 months, thank you Daryl.
Thank you, appreciate it, so these are sort of really exciting times, but they're also really nervous and anxious times in a way, so I just want to let you know sort of what the next steps are as we move forward in this 2016 bond, I'll start by saying our big task right now is that we are completing, are coming to completion, and will be coming back to the board for sort of the final review of the plans for Conote, Lawrence, and Paisley, which has been priority projects for us along this bond referendum along the way, and those are coming to some conclusion, come back for approval, there's also some plans in place, Colin Moore is working with Paisley that with, with sometime in the next six to eight weeks, we will be having a community meeting at the school at night with the parents to walk and go through these plans and explain to them, once you approve the plans, we'll then be very transparent about this, and sit down and meet, they have been part of the planning process by the way, there's, will not be anything new to them, there, a lot of their groups from Lawrence and Paisley have been at the table as well as the school staff, so it's been a great relationship and a lot of, lot of fun along the way, so what's going to happen next is basically a review of a lot of our processes to sort of support Rhonda's cause tonight, part of that will be, we'll be reviewing our, and discussing a process, a selection committee for architects for this bond, and we will select our architects for the, all the projects at one time, that's what we've done in the past, we will ask a, a board member or two to be a part of that committee, that will be coming up pretty, pretty soon, to be honest with you, as we begin that process, we'll also be reviewing the contract bidding and pricing and minority process, the state, sort of state goal on minority participation is 10%, last '06 bond I think, correct me Bill if I'm wrong, but we were somewhere around 16, 17% minority participation in the last bond, and we hope to continue to, to grow that through this bond referendum, and just to add to that, an '06 bond, 87% of the $250 million that was spent stayed in this county, so our hope and goal is to try to be, to do that as well, now there's not as many contractors in, there, there was in the '06 bond, so that may be a little bit more challenging to us, and, but we hope to continue to build upon that success of giving back to our community, we'll be reviewing the, discussing the potential pre-K centers, all that, all those discussions will be coming up pretty quickly, and we'll also be looking at the standards as it relates to our technology, where wiring needs to be, all those kind of things are, are coming to, to the head, the first bond sale is February 21st, the first 42.5 million will be available around March 1, our goal and hope is that shortly soon after, be digging dirt and moving and building a building for Paisley, Lawrence, and Conote, so a lot of stuff's going to happen, you're going to, we're going to inundate you with a lot of a, contract type approvals and things along the way, we may have some discussion about what is the right format to do those approvals, do we need to add another meeting, can we do it through technology, are there other ways that we can get in front of you to, because you're going to have a lot more activity as we get into these projects, and we'll have a lot, a lot of information to share, so Jackie if you will, I'm just going to do this as a reminder for folks, of sort of, that first set of projects that you see 2017, that, that this is the, the behind the scenes work that'll start taking place with laying out our pro, our maintenance capital projects, we'll be coming back to you with that final order, Kevin, Kevin is going to be working on the, sort of the batting order for the technology, one of the things that we're really trying to focus on there is to make sure if we're going into a building to do some two-thirds capital work, can we follow each other and do this at one time and not go tear out a ceiling and go back and do something against it, it's a lot of, a lot of logistical work to do behind that, also say Kevin and, is working, his group's going to be working on a webpage, website for the bond referendum so that we can have total transparency about how the dollars are spent, where the dollars are going, and we're also going to track our two-thirds bond dollars as well on our website, so that is in the, sort of early infant stages of discussion and, and build out around that, and then the design work around the safety improvements, and then obviously the Conote, so those things are starting to take place, all sort of come to the head, be really busy here right as we go into the holidays, but after the first of the year, after that first bond sale, things will pick up pretty rapidly, and we will begin to move forward, but we will let you know as we have these parent meetings at their schools, or community meetings, we invite you to come in to, to listen and be a part of those, so I'd really like to thank the staff too, and the people that have been a part of this bond referendum to this point, it's been, and again, I want to thank our county commissioners who allowed us to place this bond on the, on the ballot, and to the voters who were very patient to get all the way to that back page at the very bottom, and, and, and it does your heart well to know that ours was 75 and ours was a little bit higher than the other two, and I think that we really worked hard, but I think it was, it was a community effort, and, and surely I think shows the confidence that the general public has in, in this board, Dr. Emery's leadership, and public education in general, so thank you very much, any questions, I might, hopefully I covered some of the bullet points, but things will pick up, pick up quite a bit here once after the Christmas season.
Questions of Daryl, or comments, board members, no, thank you Daryl. We will move on to the building and grounds report, I will, I will quickly cover what, what we kind of talked about today, it was a lot of information but in a relatively short amount of time, Daryl and staff kind of gave us an update on sustainable practices, and that we should look for, an update maybe in the spring on what that, what that looks like, many things we're doing, but we're just putting all that together, great opportunity, and heard from a, a lovely student from NC State, with the opportunities that we may have at Sherwood Forest Elementary, to convert a, a dry pond into a wetland, this has to do with stormwater and some great things going on, so we have some potential there, also some additional fields that may be able to take place at West Forsyth High School, I believe there was some additional information that was needed by board, and so staff will bring that to us once they have put that together, so that's really the, the building and grounds report, moving on to Ms. Clark and the curriculum committee report.
So today we covered balanced literacy, that phrase, and we were led by Amy Nail and Janie Costello and Crystal, whose name I can't pronounce, but our instructional leadership team, and then we had a visit from two very fabulous and passionate teachers to, you know, kind of give a little historical view of where we, how did we get to adopt the whole philosophy of balanced literacy, and what does that mean, and we kind of looked at a, a graphic organizer that covered the components of it, everything from teacher-directed reading to word study, to self-selected reading, all components of the philosophy of balanced literacy which we are adopting and making it an imperative in our district, K all the way through 12, and so again, I would just say, you know, one of the things that we've done this year in curriculum is to invite people who are, who can really paint a picture for us as far as what is happening in the classroom, and how does it look, and what are the impacts of what we're doing, and so it was again thrilling to hear from teachers who really are passionate, and I would just say, I'm just thankful that we have, that the bond passed, and we have a lot of things to look forward with, to with that, but we have great teachers that are doing great things, so curriculum committee usually meets the third Tuesday, it's an open to the public meeting, come join us.
Thank you Ms. Clark, that concludes our discussion items for the evening, we have one item, one action item, and that is to consider approval of the 2016-2017 budget amendment number one and transfer number one, that's on page two in the booklet, we have talked extensively about this at our finance committee meeting, do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Singletary, do I have a second? Mr. Barr, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. That moves us to our consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the October 25th, 2016 meeting, and the general personnel report, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Vic Johnson, and second by Ms. Ms. Calvert-Hayes, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting, much like the public comments on agenda items, we have three minutes to, to cover a topic, we have several folks who are signed up, and so I'll just call you up, and you can give us your name, and we'll start the, we'll start the timer, first Woodrow Haney.